Welcome to the meeting of the Board of Trustees for the town of Buena Vista, Colorado. This is September 12th, 2023, and the time is 7:00 PM. Paula, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Fay.
Here.
Trustee Cobb.
Here.
Trustee Hilton Higa.
Here.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Here.
Trustee Rice.
Here.
Trustee Rowe.
I'm saying I'm online yet.
Okay, and Trustee Swisher.
Yeah.
And would everyone please silence your cell phones if you have them with you? Please join me in the... My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. Considered public, which is a stance one nation, and to protect, invisible with liberty, justice, and law. Thank you. Please, you have an agenda in front of you. And I'd like to know if anyone has any comments or changes in the agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion to accept the agenda as drafted?
So moved.
LaCretzi and Cobb, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. And then you have the consent agenda as well. Consent agenda has minutes from some of the advisory boards, the Beautification Advisory Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission, as well as our minutes from our last meeting. In addition to that, there's a approval of a contract for a company called Valerian LLC for the final design of the Billy Cordova Memorial. Since that contract is for more than $25,000, we need to have a roll call vote to accept the consent agenda. Does anyone, first of all, have any changes that they'd like to see in the consent agenda?
So I'd like to just call out one item, and that is the Billy Cordova Park Contract or Agreement. I wanted to ask, and I'm not sure if the staff are here who can answer this, but just what consideration is being given in that park designed to accessibility, inclusivity, and adaptive features? And also what experience this group may or may not have with that? Anyone?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I think that's one of the key features of, or several of the key features of the park, recognizing that the town doesn't have, its existing parks are somewhat limited in terms of accessibility especially. And so that was a big part of the GoCo grants, the success of the GoCo grants, and some of the other grant funding. I would ask Shane to share a little bit more specifics to that, but I do know that in terms of ADA access and some other things like that, those are key components of it. Certain that goes into the surfaces and materials that are used, the proximity to the trail, and parking and things like that for it. So definitely a big part of it, but let's have the rec team share maybe next time and air reports some of those details.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Sure, thanks, Philip.
Sure.
Anyone else have questions or changes to the consent agenda? Would someone like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as drafted?
I saw move.
Thank you. We have Cobb and Swisher. We need a roll call vote on this, please, Paula.
Trustee Cobb.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Higa.
Yes.
Trustee LaCretzi.
Yes.
Rice.
Yes.
And has Trustee Rowe joined us?
Yeah, let me move up to panel. Trustee Rowe, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Great.
Yeah.
Do you like to vote on the consent agenda item?
Yeah, I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion passes. When you came in, there was a clipboard to sign up to make a public comment if you would like to. And in this time of our meeting, you'll have three minutes and make a comment. You can start out with your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes begins at that point. So we have several people signed up, and Norma Katie is our first one. Would you approach the podium, please?
Okay, I'm Norma Katie, and I don't live in town anymore, so I don't even know. Anyway, I live at 9855 Highway 24285. Anyway, so what else are you supposed to say?
That's it.
Okay.
Let us begin.
This is a heads up about the status of the bench in honor of Ukraine of the town I used to live in. And finally, today, I got the design. They've been really busy from Art Valley Welding. So they sent it on email. I was gonna show it to you, but I couldn't. I don't have... Anyway, I don't. I'll make a copy of it. We'll get it on paper pretty soon. So the design has been done. It's a bunch of sunflowers on the back of the bench, and then it says Krimina, my town. And we may ask them to put down Ukraine on it somewhere so people know what that means. But anyway, so that's gonna happen, and they're hoping they can get to it in the end of October. So we'll get there somehow, but we... And so in saying that, we're gonna try to... I'm gonna put an article in the paper because I'm gonna try to raise some money because now we gotta pay them. So we've got about $800 in the bank, but we need a lot more, so we're gonna do that. And then only the little thing I'll say in conclusion is that my cohorts in Ukraine are doing some incredibly amazing things in community development work. And I'm excited to share that with you, and maybe we can do Sister Cities with them. Who knows what's gonna happen? So anyway, just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you, Norma. And next, we have Alan Robinson. Please come to the podium and give us your name and address.
My name is Alan Robinson. I'm in the state of San Bernabeu, 33700. I'm a private civil. My point really is that I'm here to ask for some money to that. Well, my three minutes. Some of you may know me from my Law Association, the Greater Arkansas River Nature Association, where I was board chair in early days, and for my work in developing the scenic byway and for my leadership in the Friends of Foremire chapter. But since 2010, I've been leading another car-sponsored effort, which is Salida, to lead the station rail historic route. And we've had several different grant supports for our feasibility study phase and for a master planning phase, and several years of implementation in getting the route designated. For the most part, it doesn't involve developing or building any new trail. It follows existing routes, low-volume county roads, and existing trail systems through Salida and through Buena Vista and through Leadville. In many ways, it's a low-speed addition or alternative to the scenic byway experience because it focuses and gives an opportunity to provide interpretation of the heritage and significance of the Midland Railroad route and the old Canyon City to Leadville State Road. That's why it's called, obviously, the Station Rail Historic Route. In 2016, it gained support from Governor Haganobers 2016 program to identify 16 trails that deserve to be completed. Most of the effort has been funded by the Colorado Parks and Wildlife Program and the town of Buena Vista has consistently been supportive of these three or four grants in the past, two to two and a couple thousand dollars. So designated route is almost complete, but we need to now shift our focus to education interpretation, development of visitor-friendly brochures and mapping and that sort of stuff. So we're actually applying for another CPW grant for about 60... The total project would be about $60,000, and $45,000 of that hopefully would come from the CPW Trails Grant Program. We're approaching the two boards of county commissioners for $3,000 in match money each, and we're approaching the three towns, including Buena Vista, for about $1,800 in match funding. The more match funding we have, the stronger our application is, as you undoubtedly know. When you show local support, we would need a letter of support, hopefully in time for us to be able to assure that in our application that we had the support of Buena Vista. I'd be happy to follow up with any details that I need to do. Thank you very much.
A lot of hard work. Okay, our next public comments are coming from Kathy and Jeff Keitel. Are you gonna make two comments or one?
Two.
Okay, so they each have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Kathy Keitel, and I live at 209 South Colorado Avenue in Buena Vista. Thank you for allowing for public comment. My concerns tonight are regarding sound pollution generated by the terrace on Main Street, located at 332 Main Street, Suite 200. The business website of the terrace indicates that the business was established in 2022 and is Buena Vista's first and only rooftop venue, offering small bites and drinks. According to their booking website, and now advertising themselves as a wedding venue starting in 2023, they had 16 wedding and/or reception events in July and 14 events in August. Our home is one block directly south of the venue. Music funnels down our street, and when alcohol is involved, party goers get loud, then the music gets louder, and then the people get louder. Last Friday night, it sounded like a cheering football stadium until about 11:30 PM. As I walked down to take a video of the noise at 10:00 PM, a neighbor came outside and asked, "What in the world is going on?" My understanding is music should end at 10:00 PM. This happens sometimes, or I should say most of the time, but there have been several incidences of the music lasting beyond the 10:00 PM curfew. However, even when the music ends, the cheering, yelling, and clapping do not end, and they last well beyond the established curfew time. I understand businesses have rights, but do the rights of businesses trump the rights of citizens to a quiet and peaceful evening in their home? We have lived in our resident, current residence for 35 years, and for the first time ever, our quality of life has been disrupted. Totes that hang above the tables at the business are like a megaphone, so sound travels out and down the street instead of up into the air. I think in order for this issue to be resolved, there needs to be three considerations. One, a sound study. Two, a sound barrier on the south side of the building. And number three, a consideration by the council to carefully consider the neighborhoods and residences and the impact of these rooftop venues on the citizens of Buena Vista. Please reevaluate current guidelines and establish guidelines that don't impact the quality of life as we've known it. We have one rooftop venue right now. I understand there will be a second rooftop venue in the near future after the new construction of the Viking and the CKS building is completed. Precedence has already been established in terrace on Main, but please put on the brakes and recognize the impact of rooftop venues. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Kathy.
I am Jeff Keitel, 209 South Colorado Avenue, and just to support that, I concur with the comments that Kathy had, but also to think that we're at the end of the summer season, and I think we have ample opportunity through the winter to resolve this, both from a regulatory standpoint and maybe also from a physical sound barrier standpoint. So I think there's time to get this all resolved before, you know, the next summer season, and get that done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. So that concludes our public comment.
Mayor, we do have one online.
Oh, yeah, please, I forgot, online.
Jerry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Go ahead.
My name is Jerry Raski. I live at 10158 Starlight Lane in Salida, Colorado, and I'm here to talk about a new nonprofit called Hiccup that's focused on election integrity. Hiccup is a nonprofit whose aim it is to boost trust in the election process in Chaffee County. The Secretary of State of Colorado calls Colorado's elections the gold standard, but like gold, the elections are opaque. Hiccup's mission promotes trust through transparency. Hiccup has been funded for the last three years, but the magnitude and importance of our mission necessitates seeking external funding. Hiccup has begun its outreach program, speaking to you tonight, the county commissioners, Salida City Council, Pacha Springs trustees, both political parties, and the League of Women Voters. Although Hiccup is a newly formed nonprofit, we've already been featured in local news articles who writes that Hiccup's mission statement aligns with that of the League of Women Voters, and that Hiccup's achievements have already resulted in improvements in the Chaffee County election process. So I'd like to thank you for this public comment and follow up with an email to the trustees and the mayor where they can learn more about Hiccup and discuss further opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Now that concludes our public comment. Anyone else out there? So now we will go to our staff reports. Attending with you, Dean Chief.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. Several items to go over briefly in my report. Let's see here. First, I wanted to acknowledge Chaffee Fire. We've been working closely with them. We've had a couple of traffic crashes on the highway, which are... Can be a pretty dangerous thing, and I worked one with Officer Mitchell last week, and Chaffee Fire was there real quick, had a good response, good people, had a lot of cones out for our safety because there was a lot of traffic moving around. So just appreciate that partnership with Chaffee Fire. I wanted to acknowledge that. Monday is the community dinner, and one of the things I wanted to point out is we're gonna have a company there called Meridian that is bringing some special traffic barricades. They did a demo for the town staff and the police department about a month ago. Really neat design, brings a lot of safety to public events. There was a pretty good price tag with them. So as the trustees, if you're able to attend, take a look at these. They're gonna have a rep there named Ian, really nice guy, who can kind of talk about how they work and function. But I think it's something that, you know, in the past, we've blocked off streets with cars and things like that, which is not always ideal. If that vehicle gets hit, then it's kind of taken out of the game, and that's expensive. So these barricades provide a pretty good solution to some of that, and they really help the public feel safe and provide a lot of safety. We met with a company called AgeX on August 14th. We were looking at some cameras and things for the schools and some software. Met with Sheriff Spezian Chief Johnson for lunch on August 14th, and we discussed some issues about local law enforcement. We've been working really close with Phillip and Jana on the budget. That's the favorite time of year. There's some photos later on, you'll see. We did some active shooter training at the school. Officer Mitchell and I were both instructors on that, so we did some of that. And you can see in that picture on the right that we used our new training room, which we've actually used several times over the past few weeks. So it's really nice, really helps us a lot, so that was a solid training. We had back-to-school night on August 22nd, and that went real well. And let's see here. Oh, the school law enforcement partnership, I think that's an agenda item later on, so I'll talk about that then. Let's see, if you want to scroll up, Phillip, I didn't...
I'm sorry, I was trying to get to your pictures. That's the best part.
Oh, yeah, we'll scroll down to the pictures here in a minute. Let's see, this testing my eyesight.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a sergeant opening we're testing for. We've got two that started the academy in August that should be done in December, so that will really help out our staffing. Let's see, we attended a kick-flop update held by the District Attorney Council on August 30th in Salida. That was really educational. We've been doing firearms training the last couple of weeks, and we had to put the school on a secure status on September 1st due to some bears that were visiting. Also tomorrow, at the River Park at 3:00, we're doing our 9/11 challenge because that's an overlap day for us. We can't do it actually on 9/11, but that's where we wear our tactical gear, and we go up to the Trestle Bridge and back to honor all the firefighters and police that went into the buildings and lost their lives on 9/11. And I want to acknowledge that and honor that, and I think some Chaffee Fire guys are gonna be joining us too with some bunker gear, so it should be a good time. And... Yes, yeah, if you want to scroll through the pictures now. That picture there with the people in the helicopter, the airport did their high-altitude fly-in. So Megan and Officer Flores and Grant, they were trying to steal the helicopter, I think. And then, yeah, it's then at the first day of school, back-to-school night. And then the tactical vehicle that was funded earlier this year, you can see it there in the background. That's in the county, and they've already put it to use. They brought it to back-to-school night, and then there's those two roughings that are my nature tree. That's all I've got. I have taken any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Does anyone have questions about the police department or how it's going in their new building? It's a nice building.
It is a nice building. Yeah, now they removed and stopped back by.
Are things slowing down a little bit? Are some of your folks getting some vacation or not yet?
Yeah, that started this week, so we're looking at a lot of holes on the schedule.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's well-deserved vacation. They worked hard this summer, and if you look at the overtime we've used, we burned through a lot of it, but it's summertime. It's the way the chips fall.
Could you say again, the 9/11 event tomorrow, is it tomorrow?
Yeah, so we're gonna meet at the River Park at the bridge at 3:00, and we go up to the Midland and then over to the old Trestle Bridge and back, and we wear our gear. And I don't see problems if any citizens want to join us. We're gonna have, it's a first responder event, but we're gonna have some flags and stuff to represent like police and fire. Usually when we get there, we talk a little bit about 9/11, about how many people were killed. There was that statistic that because of the after-effects of some of the things those guys and gals were exposed to, that it's almost equal to the people who died on 9/11, which is sad. Kind of memory lane for some of us is, you know, where were you on 9/11? What do you remember? It's interesting, we've got some new young officers that were, you know...
Wow.
When 9/11 happened.
Wow.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, now we have Mr. Benson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. My report is in the packet, page 64. We have a new planning technician who started, I think that made it in there, Jamie Graves, which is fantastic. We're getting some good training in. It's a permits process and some added organization, which is fantastic. The planning, I mean, we're still there on the planner one, so we'll just see. Players of the commission will meet next week. Moratorium, of course, expires next week naturally, and I've got a list of minor subdivisions and some majors that are just waiting to come. So anticipate a little more excitement. It's been a really slow planning department.
It's not.
We have plenty to do, and we're gonna have lots more to review soon, so, which is great. Thank you again for the historic designation of the Pearl Theater last meeting. And just a reminder, next week, on the 21st Thursday, here at 5:00 PM, there's a meeting with the Historic Preservation Committee Commission, excuse me, and the Certified Local Government Group, and they're coming in to give the result of a survey. They surveyed about 25 different properties on the west side of town. So it's just a rundown of what those properties are and answering questions. So the property owners have been invited. So anyone who wants to come out, it's pretty interesting to see kind of that process, and that would be the first step then for if anyone wants to pursue historic designation for those properties. Additionally, hoping still to look at the comprehensive planning process, just visiting the RFP to get that going later this month. So that's on track. And then we also updated building permits. There's some still to update, but we broke it down. You see that about as much, and these are multi-family or single-family units, about as much activity before August as since August 1st. So getting a good bit done, we've got a couple more to do in the queue, and then we're all cut up, which is great. Development projects, I did include some tables in there, Table 2, and I tried to break out major subdivisions that are in process. Again, trying to kind of keep the names of the subdivisions out because there's, you know, some... I can answer anything specifically, but you can see what the phase of development is. And I tried to break it down, the number of units left to build, how many of those units, maybe some sort of workforce housing. Again, there's no clear definition there, but a little less than, you know, depending on the AMI, et cetera. And then assumed SFEs, we also broke out some projects that have approached a town to one form or another, and some of these may not happen, and some might. So that's in there, just to get an idea of SFEs on the horizon potentially. What we know might be workforce, there's some question marks, of course. Then this last section, I haven't had a chance to populate this, but I want to give an idea of what, how many open building permits are out there. The number of minor subdivisions under review, just so you guys have this general idea of what is, what we're looking at. Water, we'll talk some in the executive session later, but I also put down, updated dashboard, chasing through it a little bit, and updated some things and tried to... Yeah, we've got about 360 available, quote unquote. And you can see the various buckets and the allocation of where things are. And that's it. If you have any questions, please ask away.
So in where you have the phase of development.
So in where you have the phase of development. Inquiry, inquiry two years ago, why wouldn't we even have that in there for two years ago? Have they not pursued it since then?
Correct. These categories really, they've just come and said, hey, I want to explore doing this and we had some sort of a. Pre, pre-application meeting. And so we sat and visited, what, what are they going to have to do for this project? This, as far as we know, still on the property. And things are just stalled out for, for them on that reason. And they haven't come back, but we still have it. I've got to record it just in case.
Okay, thank you. Just to add with that, if they would come back, would we update them, obviously, and make sure they are familiar with where our new allocation process is? So if they do, okay, just so. Kind of like in the article today, there's complete transparency, so everybody knows where we're standing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Just going through here at the phase of development, I'm not seeing, I didn't put all the developments names on there, but just double checking on crossings. Is that under the needs final plaque? Because that's administrative approval on that or?
Yeah, the phase one is a final plaque. So that's that one. This is need final plaque for that.
Hundred and then fifty?
Yeah.
So that would not be included then in the fifty general development or the fifty-two point eight in general development then?
At this point, no, because I haven't gone through final plaque. So when they do the PIA, then that wouldn't, whether we do fifty. Yeah, within the SFE count, that is not represented in the SFE.
Because that would pretty much clear out the general development then, right?
Right. Yeah, there's a, a few projects that. Yeah, we're going to have to visit and talk about that at some point here.
Cool, just want to make sure.
Yeah. Yeah, none of those that are. Well, the farm is executing, South Main is executing, the Boulders are executing. Those are represented within the.
Right. And carbon is already included. Well, you have it here, it's on line, but yeah, okay.
Sue, thank you for circulating the Colorado Sun article. And it was a very good article, I thought. I want to congratulate you two for making it clear in the article as to what it is we're trying to do with, with water allocations. I thought it was just very well, well explained and.
Thank you.
And it's creative, came across.
You never know how those things come across.
Things were captured accurately.
I do.
Reported well, yeah.
Yeah.
Joseph did a great job too.
It was a really honest attempt at talking about water and development and combining those two. I think they did, they did a good job.
Good.
I had the article sent to me from several, several friends in different municipalities. Like, oh, there is when you're looking at this.
Yeah, well, it was really good. Any other questions for Joel? Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
And now we have Sean Williams, Public Works Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Yeah, pretty, pretty. A lot, a lot going on in this report, pretty, pretty, pretty well rounded report with a lot of different things that are happening right now. As always, the August production information on that, we haven't, you know, had much success in getting our consultant back for leak detection. We still have some goals and we're still optimistic that, you know, we'll be able to do that. We're just, timing wise has been challenging. I think there's a lot of. A lot of busy people and our staff is pretty busy, so, but we're still planning on doing that. I mean, and it kind of looks, you know, fairly, fairly reasonable, but you know, given the amount of water that we produced in August, it's really, you know. If we would have made it less water, the end account would look much higher, so just to make that clear. So it helps. The more we make, the less it looks. So anyways, but it's still something that, that we're challenging ourselves to get, get out in front of. And, and work on through the rest of this year and next year if needed. Water plant expansion project, I think maybe we could maybe talk about this a little bit and staff and trustee. I thought maybe at some point we were talking about maybe doing the field trip maybe in October. I'm not too sure, so I just kind of wanted to bring that up. We're plugging away, we're working on the Clearwell expansion, so a lot of masonry concrete work is going in right now. So we have some holes in the ground that are getting built up for, for part of our pretreatment. Water collection system for a part of the face of the project, so. Going okay. We're a little behind schedule. We're working on that right now, though. The upper tank recording project is happening, so if anybody's driven up on. County Road three oh six near County three fifty-one, let's see that our, our contractors are up there working and preparing for, for, for new coat of paint on the tanks. So that project is. Probably going to be, be able to be completed on schedule and that's October sixteenth, so just in time for, yeah. Weather changes that are happening. We'll circle back around with the water advisor board and see how the water conservation grant is progressing. Hopefully this month, well, three is moving along, waiting for kind of irrigation seasons to, to wrap up, to get. The installation of the power supply conversion done. And yeah, waiting to hear back from Olson on the Arizona Bridge RFP advertisement package. We updated that. We were hoping to have that out, you know, probably this month to get advertised, but I'll have to check with Ben Gruny with Olson to see where we're at with that. A few development constructing projects. I think I miss a few every once in a while and it's, you know, just kind of wanted to kind of show the, the areas that are kind of impacting our team in the Boulder project. They actually got the street open on Friday, reopened last week, did a sewer main extension on Colorado Avenue. And they're looking to kind of wrap up their. Early grading permit phase of things. And so we're looking at the. The public improvements. OBCs, the costs in the, the phase of that project that was needed to be completed, so. Looks like it's going pretty well. I just want to kind of verify some elevations and see what their plan is moving forward into the civil construction phases coming in. Where that would be putting in the water mains on site and sewer mains on site and starting to, you know, construct our roads and things like that. Farm phase two is, is kind of wrapping up the big bulk of the phase. I think they've completed the concrete and phase and paving phases. For the main part of the, of the loop that ties into it, the old Antero Circle Apartments. There's still an apartment phase coming, part of that phase of projects that hasn't been started yet. But the infrastructure is there now for that, that little face to kind of get going or that smaller face. Yeah, Speedway up on West Main, trying to get that done, wrapped up. Yeah, there's just a lot going on as Albertson is putting in right now, curb and gutter and sidewalks and that's on Marquette Avenue. Kind of a big little section of dirt road that needs constant. Caressing. Week goes by. Street projects, I don't know if you've had a chance to drive on, you know, Greg Drive or, or Rodeo Road, but those. Chip seal projects are, are done and complete. I thought that they came out pretty well. Real, I was happy with they won chip seal companies' finished work. They do a great job of coming back and mitigating any issues throughout the year. If those come up, but they look like new roads, fortunately. EMS wants to cut through it right now to bring in power, but hey, we have a boring company up there and I'm talking with Kyle with DSI, look at the strategy there, so I think we're going to attempt that. I, I just, and they seem to be open to that. West as well, so there's some utility spectrum charters up on Greg Drive and they're putting in. Conduit for, for expanding their, their. Communication services, DSL, things like that. I imagine is what they're doing up there, so they have a boring machine and we've already talked to them about. Putting in some conduits in for that project and they said, yeah, we could do that, so looking forward to that. I, I'm, I'm kind of up in the air right now a little bit on some of the street painting stuff that's going to come in, so we still have some striving to do. On Greg Drive and on Rodeo Road. I've had a, one citizen reach out to Public Works and want to know if we could. Modify the bike lane that was on one side of Greg, on Rodeo Road, so we just had it on the one side. I, I think we're going to need to put it back to the way it was engineered, the way it was designed. They're, they're pretty narrow if you try to move two in on both sides and they don't have the width that we, that we, you know. I think four foot is kind of the minimum. And on top of that, we kind of have a safe crossing right now on, on. Where Rodeo Road meets West Main Street, so I think we're going to, you know, kind of. Stop thinking about that and just go ahead and put it back in the way it was constructed originally. I appreciate the feedback from the community and I understand there's some. Some different lenses on this and perspective that's worth spending a little bit of time looking at, but we'll be putting it back in the way it was.
On the east side of the road.
On the east side. Yeah. Yeah, we have, we do have the, the striping contractors coming in next week to do some milling for thermal inlays for. We're going to do some more thermal inlays for crosswalks, so we have some locations where they're coming back in to do that work. And then they'll follow up probably not next week, but the week after to come in, just try being. On Greg Drive, Rodeo Road and some of the other sites that we had paint needs in town. Pretty, pretty, pretty. Robust, hungry tree trimming RFP, but I just kind of wanted to share with everybody kind of the locations that we have identified. I don't know that we're, we're budgeted to do all of this work, but it looks like we're pretty close to that, so. There's a few removals and a lot of trimming going on there. Jump back into, jump back up and talk just really quick about the Charles Street Landscape Project. That's the mini grant project, so. We've done a little bit of work then, we kind of looked at it, we did a little bit more work, but we have some holder placements done. We have our concrete scheduled for next week, so a small little kind of patio gathering area possibly for maybe, you know. Multi-use or maybe just a bench and some sidewalks along the park here. We'll have that done and we'll wrap up the, kind of the rock and the landscape, the hardscaping that comes after that, so. I really appreciate the Parks Team and their efforts. It, it, I think it's going to look fantastic. I think there's a nice touch to it, so, so bear with us on this, though, you know, it might not look like much right now, but I think. Once we get it all done, it's going to look fantastic. Pretty unique, I think, anyways, I'm really excited for that project. And we're, you know, up across, on the, across the street there too, or the beautification advisory board had that little pocket park, so really all we have to do is run it maybe. One or two more rocks, but just put some edging in and, and, and complete that project over there. I'm going to jump to the end, I think. Oh, big, big warm welcome to Jackie Krueger. She. Filled our opening that we had for our cleaning service custodial and we're really happy with her. She's a great fit for Public Works and. We've had good feedback from other departments. She's, she's a hard worker and she's great to be around and. We're lucky to have picked up somebody that, you know, to help us with that need, so. She's, she's been great. Just, I'll, I'll follow up on the, the in-kind donations a little bit more. When we're, when we get done with BB Strong, but gosh, I don't, how many years have we been doing this and. Kind of terra septic and waste management and chippy ways of providing, you know, those services free of cost for that event and just want to recognize that. They're so great to work with and they're always eager to help out. Really appreciate them and it's a, it's a pretty cool thing that they do. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know. A lot of time that takes them to do that and we generate a little bit of trash. At events, so. I think the other kind of noteworthy item too, maybe we can save a little bit for traps, staff trustee interaction as well, so. And it's a, it's a beautification advisory board request to enter a contest for some. Money to help beautify our dog park. So I think I wanted a little bit of direction. I think I wanted to see if you needed a little bit more information, but if we talk about it in a trustee. Staff and you support it the next week, maybe I'll bring a little bit more information on the contest rules and a. Letter of support, so. I'll end with that. You have any questions?
I have a little comment, just kind of actually tying into that, which I think would be great, so I'd love to find out more in the letter of support. But time to, I know that's been on there to do this for a while, to do something with the dog park, get it somewhere. As a dog owner, talking to many dog owners, I think we're all very excited, something to happen over there and. You know, so whether or not they get this grant, which I would hope they would, is there a timeline for some improvement? So I kind of, I would love if we get an update from them or just kind of like what they can do to get done over there with the grant or without the grant. Because I know it's been quite some times to think anything has really been moving over there and speaking for. Quite a few dog owners I know are very excited for something to be improved and beautified over there, so. Yeah, so just to share that with them would be, that would be great.
Yeah, and I think, you know. Budget season is upon us. And it's fairly long if I remember right. I mean, it, it started, you know, months ago, right? But I know we have some. Milestone dates for trustees and staff for, you know, presenting, you know, our projects, but I think that, you know, maybe. You know, maybe we can kind of strategize, you know, you know, I mean, it's a contest, right, so. There's only one winner. I don't know how many communities are entering and it's a nationwide contest, so maybe we should have, you know.
I can maybe speak to some of them, Paula, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I think part of the holdup is. Liability concerns to a certain extent and costs, like I think, like they've talked about wanting to do shading in the dog parks as a place to sit and. But to do one of those shades, since it's on town property or if the beautification puts it in, there's concern of. If you don't put like large enough posts, deep enough. And wind picks up because it picks up here, then it hits somebody and hurts somebody. There's concerns there, so to do it right, you really want to get like a. Backhoe in there, which means we have to tear down the fence to get everything in there and use the town's resources possibly.
Yeah, you know, and we want to construct it to building code standards, so we have wind load rating requirements, so we want to make sure that we meet those. You're right, you're absolutely right. I mean, we, we could probably put something up there that was actually just fine, but yeah, from. You know, we try to build things that meet our code and build things that last, right? If you, so those are some challenges there.
And then the other concern that has to do with water, I think, because there's been some talk of getting water lines out there or something out there, so you can. Have grass or have other vegetation, but if, this just sounds kind of ridiculous, my dog had feet works, but. If there's water that the town supply in dog parks, a lot of dogs get sick because they drink the same water that the dogs get and they drink the diseases. So then again, there's some liability concerns there that they'll be spreading diseases and blame the town, and so we don't want to bring water to the park. Because if then it's possible, so it's just, that's another holdup. So there's been a lot of ideas and a lot of. Potential purchases to improve that I've been, I've missed in the past two beautification meetings, but those are the conversations we have had. And a lot of the holdups are like, just a really quick idea that some brings forward the moment we run it through and talk with Sean or Allison's there like, well. There's actually a risk to bring that forward because to do it right, it's going to cause a certain amount. We're backlogged on. Resource like town staff's already stretched thin and that's going to be pretty far.
Sure.
Cute. At least that was my understanding from some of the holdups.
I think so, and I think like recognizing, you know, like the way we try to build our town, right? Smart ways to build things, street with, you know, our investments to, to maintain. The, the way our street designs are, I think, you know, our parks and our, you know, duck park and amenities like that, or, I mean, I was, I appreciate that consideration because I really appreciate that the. The advisory boards that participate with these projects are aware of that, so I, I agree. There are certain things, but there are probably some things that we could, that we could provide, you know, anyways, I think we just, there's just, you know.
There's a lot of.
A lot of ways to go with this.
I'm just doing my due diligence, said I'd ask and see where to go, so people are excited for anything, so just figured I'd put that out there. Thank you for the updates on, on that.
Anything else for Public Works?
Yes, Andy. I have a couple of questions, Sean. It's kind of a popular topic these days with the tree trimming.
Oh, yeah.
Can you, I have two questions about that. Can you speak to what is the, the driver for your tree trimming, pruning and removal?
Yeah. Health of the trees and, you know, vulnerabilities, you know, I think, you know, a lot of what we. What we're looking at, if you look at the list, it's mostly cottonwoods, right?
These trees are in right away.
They're in the town's right away.
They're in town right away. They're our responsibility to maintain.
Yeah.
Do, do you expect a level of attention over your. Tree trimming activities that we've seen with respect to the power lines?
I don't know if I understand your question exactly. Can you, can you, can expand on that a little bit?
Are you expecting any public relations challenges with your tree project?
No, I'm not. I think is, you know, one, I. I think, cause you know, one, I, you know, I guess this is an ongoing maintenance program that, you know, we, we're would provide to our community for, you know, health and benefit and wellness of, you know, our community, our people, you know, the trees, you know, potentially becoming hazards, you know, where we find trees that maybe need to be removed because, you know, possibly, you know, they've reached their lifespan or maybe they're hollow inside. And, and, and because of that, you know, they're, they're definitely a hazard to our community. Or, or maybe a hazard, you know, with the wind blow. So the tree advisory board and we have a little bit of help from, you know, some of the state forest liaisons that we have, some of the people that help, you know, participate with, who are arborists and our staff that are, that are arborists as well. So, you know, these, these trees are selected because they either have a canopy that needs some work, or maybe they had bad trimming in the past. Or maybe the, the tree is, you know, we're just trying to, you know, keep the tree, you know, alive a little bit longer by removing top growth that, that may be no longer, it's their dead wrenches and things like that. And so those are primarily the trees that we have on the list. And, and then some of the trees that we see that, that maybe they have, you know, a lot of, you know, the, the top growth canopy that are, that are that are dead or dying or, or evaluating over the years. We see that it's regressing. Those trees become part of that removal list as well. So but, you know, I, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a good question. Because, you know, it's an interesting, you know, a different lens than mine. And I've always kind of seen that this is something that, you know, the town has been promoting for decades. And, you know, and we've kind of put ourselves into this and some other places where, you know, now our investments need to become, you know, even more significant, you know, because there's a lot of work to do. And those right away trees, you know, for, you know, for the safety of our community.
So it, yeah, it's an ongoing program.
It is.
Those are trees in a right away. And to some degree, it's hazard mitigation.
Yeah.
If I may. Sean seemed also spent quite a bit of time building this plan with the tree advisory board input. So it's amazing what a plan will do to mitigate a concern. Community input. Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
Yeah. Sounds like you have a good plan.
If I could jump back into the dog park thing, so I realize I didn't, I was gonna say that I don't wanna speak for a beautification committee, but I know that everybody there really wants to improve the dog park. And it's top priority for some members in particular. So if you do know people in the community who want improvements and are talking about a lot about it, that then be more than happy to talk with folks who wanna do a fundraising or drive or something else that I think they, if they wanna take part and also help in doing that. So I think that has also been some beautifications talked about. It'd love more volunteers for people to help with this, this process. Not just the dog park, but other stuff too. But, you know, if they do really wanna, I think, a key thing is raising money for it. So if they're really interested, put them in touch with some beautification.
He told me that, that should be interested. Seems a third year enough. So that's, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Public Works? For Sean. And now Kent, I see you're on your feet already and we'd like to hear from you about the fire department.
Thank you. So my name is Kent Maxwell. I am the Fire Chief for Chatham County Fire. I've been a volunteer firefighter for thirty-three years. I served a dozen years as a station captain in Ponchi Springs. And the last seven years is a volunteer battalion chief. Justin Hart is our acting assistant chief. So Justin's been the chief on county for about the last, I believe, four years. So we both transitioned into part-time paid staff for Chief County Fire, which at the bottom of the bullet points there and given rise to the issue that we're sorting through. So A job is, is president, fire enforcement coordinator for Colorado Fire Camp. Five oh one C three, Wildland Firefighter School started twenty years ago. And that's where we do a lot of wildland firefighter training and wildfire mitigation, including the project that we did at North Final Creek for game trail and trail west. So the transition for me to take this side hustle, I guess, is that interim fire chief as someone is a, a public employee runs into some statutory and constitutional issues on ethics and conflict of interest. And so we're working our way through that and having, I spoke with Phil Puckett a couple of days ago. Or I lose track. It's been two weeks and it's been a long. And we'll work, work up a, a plan to go through all of the issues presented to the fire district's attorney and then also share it with the town. And the town can also take another look at it. Just to see that we have that transparency as required by, by law and that we're not violating the public trust or the fiduciary duty. Otherwise, what we have going on is an expected hiring. So the second bullet point is the expected hiring. Permanent is probably not the right word. That's not the way. Particularly in Colorado where it's an at-will state and then also people can choose to, to seek other employment. So hiring a new chief, I'm not involved in that process. I've been asked to apply for the position. They do. And so as part of that process, I can't be part of, of how the selection is done. Trusted Hart will be the contact. So that if you have any questions about that hiring, they are working on outreach. But, but as far as that part, that would be through either a board member for the fire district or through, through Chief Hart. Third bullet point in there is the report for commercial Kira Jones with ten commercial inspections in the last month, two short-term rental inspections. Working on some stuff, some commercial plan reviews and web meetings. I assume that's, that workload's gonna increase as the moratorium lapses. And then also working with the airport and some of the land that the town acquired. It had a fire system under the county system requirements. And so it's needed to maintain access to those and those need to be a plan to maintain those. So as the property owner, that's the responsibility of the town. And so Kira will be working through that with staff. And then the fourth whole point in there about the special events upcoming, what we have is for the fire department is contracted to provide fire protection services for the Billy Strings Renewal Festival. And we're working through as part of our communication coming up kind of a theme of having an actual plan for how to coordinate all of the regular responsibilities we have as a fire protection district. Our obligations to the town of Beavista. And then what we do when we're, we're staffing up to assist a special event or wildland deployments. And so the fire district does have a, a wildland program. Not quite the same as the town of Beavista ran when it was the Beavista Fire Department where it was predominantly extra personnel, reserve personnel that weren't part of the regular fire protection. And so we need to balance that out and we're, we're working to, to pull together a plan with that. So otherwise what we have is we have ten staff, including myself and Chief Hart, ten paid staff, excuse me. And we're hiring for an administrative assistant position. Currently, we expect to fill that in the next couple of weeks. Twenty-five volunteer firefighters, four resident firefighters that are housed in the newly remodeled fire station number four in Ponchi Springs. And an active recruitment retention program working on a candidate academy coming up that may have as many as nine new new firefighters in the candidate program. Weeks in, trying to balance with that sense of urgency, putting out all the little fires with patience as the transition goes through, that that's, can that on staff. And so be mindful of that, but trying to be responsive to the needs of the community, the needs of our, our agency partners. I've been spending a fair amount of time driving around meeting with agency partners. Chief Morgan and I have not yet met up for properly, but it's in the, it's in the works. We did meet up on scene out there on that accident. Highway twenty-four. And then the last thing I'll have on there that are not part of the report is you have some preliminary discussions. I was unable to attend the meeting. But the impacts that the increase in property valuations will have on the town's budget. And just trying to be mindful of that. And so having that discussion as we go through that. Thirty-seven percent increase in the valuation within the town. And so you haven't, your, your overall budget is not increasing by that, that, that amount is my understanding. So I work to that. And then the last thing I'd add is that I am willing to assist the town with the Sangre de Cristo tree. If you get into that where it becomes appropriate for my involvement, then I'd be glad to assist in terms of that mitigation. As I think one of the last speakers at the public comment about community and that importance on community is, is what from my experience in doing a lot of fire prevention mitigation, that's a it's not just about the trees, it's about the community. It's not just about the fire risk, it's about the community. And slash disposal, what you're gonna actually do with what gets cut. And that's been an ongoing headache. I've been doing that for about twenty-some years. I might have something to add if, if you, if you, if you want, if you desire the input. So questions? I think that's all I, yeah, questions?
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for taking this on.
Oh, we did.
Oh, yeah.
Participated in a, an event with Representative Bridget Patterson, the mayor, myself, Keith Baker, and State Forest Service were there. Only about fifty attendees. Yeah, it was a useful time. Thank you very much.
Good for doing that. Thank you. Great. Okay, that completes our staff reports. I'd like to welcome Ashley from the JP Housing Authority to give us an update on what you all are doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. I'm Ashley Apple. I'm just gonna provide a high-level overview tonight of our strategic initiatives. We just adopted, the board have just adopted a new strategic plan at the last board meeting. So that's pretty exciting and both in the near term and then what's possible in the long term. So I think the theme here on this slide is really partnerships, partnerships, partnerships. That word is repeated several times and we know we cannot solve this affordable housing crisis in Chaffey County without partnering with you all, the other jurisdictions, other stakeholders in the community and just really working together on this. So the first, there's four priority areas that we're focused on. And the first one is, all of these are to be, the, the goal is for these to be achieved by the end of 2024. So this is like another year and a half, let's go a bit less than that. The first priority outcome is development. And we want to add seventy-five D restricted rental units by building Jane's Place and mixing up Carbonite Street. That will meet the needs of the 2022 housing needs assessment that the JP Housing Authority put together at thirteen point six percent. So that's our goal by the end of 2024. And then we also want to continue to partner with developers to create another seventy-five D restricted rental units for construction to start within the next three years. So we already are in talks with, of course, the Crossing, Paul Andrews. And we submitted two letters of intent for land making under the Prop one twenty-three, three, land making program. The homestead is one of those projects. There's a light tech developer outside of Denver, in Denver, that would come in and do fifty units of thirty, fifty, sixty percent, eighty percent AMI with one, two, and three bedroom mixes. So that was one of the land making applications we submitted. And the second one was Alpine West. And that's located just outside of Beavista in the county. Alex Tellhurst and, and the JP Housing Authority, we've been working with him on that project for some time. That land making application was, would be, would include six workforce condos for the JP Housing Trust. And as well as twenty-four heat restricted rental apartments as well. Couple other developers that we're talking to, but they're sort of preliminary that I'm not gonna highlight those names right now. Priority outcomes is education and advocacy focused. We really want to educate the community on what is possible and what we're doing. I feel like you all may be aware that we're not sure that everybody in the community is aware of that the JP Housing Authority exists. We're a young organization. We really wanna explain who we are and what, what we're capable of and what's the potential. I think there's a lot of other mountain communities that we can learn from. And then I've been talking to those directors of those housing authorities. That's one piece of that. And, you know, providing updates like tonight is, is an example of that. And I'd like to continue to do this every couple of months if that would be okay with you all. There's a We Are JP documentary that the housing authorities in partnership, we wrote a grant with public health, county public health. And so that documentary is explaining the crisis in affordable housing in Chaffey County. I interviewed for that, just Typho, Typho did. And there's others in the community that I've interviewed and that will be released in May. So that's pretty exciting to really shed light on, on, on what are some of the problems, but also what are the solutions? And we're really planning to do more writing in the paper and radio and reaching out to community members to really let them know what we can do for them. Some of the local policy and advocacy work we've done so far this year. We partnered with, you see, the Community Foundation and the JP Housing Trust. The four of us are partnering as the JP Housing Solutions Coalition. And one of the examples of the projects that we've worked on is in Salida. I'm sure you're familiar with the Southark neighborhood. It's a development that the town of, the city of Salida is working on. There is an opportunity to build up to four hundred units in that development and really the consultants prepared initially two hundred and fifty units. And so one of the that we worked with partnering together was a coalition to go and say, hey, let's, let's build more units. And this will be D restricted, about half of it will be D restricted workforce and all of it will be workforce. And so would really make a dent in the, in the, in the problem. And so through that effort, I mean, I think that there, the consultants have come back and the second iteration of the plan is now at three hundred and fifty or four hundred. There's two plans. So we've, we're also potentially gonna put, put, you know, continue to advocate for as many units as possible to solve the problem. I'm working with the county planning on a possible amendment to the county land use code. This is very, very preliminary. It hasn't gone before planning commission or the county board commissioners, but it would, you know, reduce the density requirements for ADUs in the county because there, there's, that'd be one way that the county could help in solve the crisis and by adding some workforce housing and ADUs. So, and priority outcome three, moving on to programming. So this is kind of in the reverse where we'll take these at the bottom first. Deepening the effectiveness of our continuum of care and round deposit guarantee programs. If you're not familiar with those, the continuum of care is really men and members facing homelessness and housing insecurity and accessing safe and stable housing and services that address their individual needs through a collaborative process. It's a way for public service providers to collaboratively meet those needs. So it's like a wraparound. So it's like a wraparound services providing for people that are homeless in our community or are very, are housing insecure. So over the past year, the continuum of care has served ninety-four individuals, fifty-six who are homeless and thirty-eight who are housing insecure. And we're expanding that to include a homeless outreach team for specifically families. We've just got a grant that will help pay for that and really to focus on making sure that families who are homeless have the needs, as many as they can to get met. The rental deposit guarantee program is another grant that was received a couple of years ago. And it's a zero-interest loan for security deposits. So when you're going to, you have to, last month's first month, and good deposit. Security deposit all at once, it's a lot. And so this provides the opportunity, we provide a security deposit, they pay it back over the course of their lease. So it's a revolving loan fund. We're also working on with Salida's Inclusionary Housing Program and of course Carbonite Street on managing the D restrictions for that program. And Jane's Place is, of course, once it gets built, it's a very complicated project that we want to get right. It's very, it's an unprecedented project. I mean, it has a homeless shelter, shelter for seasonal, housing for seasonal workers, transitional housing, eight one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms and two studios, plus a coffee shop for neurodivergent workers and a community nonprofit space, all in one place. And it's very small four-building, you know, location. And so this is really an unprecedented project that we're taking on. And, you know, getting it right in terms of all those different populations is really critical to have the right programming and the right culture manager in place to make sure that that is a good, makes it a good project, takes off and is really successful. And then our priority four outcome is funding. You know, we can't solve this problem if we don't have money and a sustainable funding source for the organization. The first tactic here is to create an aspirational budget. So we want to do it at three levels, baseline, ideal and best case so that we can really back up, hey, what can we do if we had this amount of funding, this amount of funding, or this amount of funding? And I'll speak to that at the end here, but, you know, we're really looking to secure a ten-year revenue stream for at least one, two million dollars annually. And there's a lot of ways that we could do that listed below. Of course, we are appreciative of the town's, our governmental agreement and commitment to the housing authority. And there's a, there's a ballot initiative that we are contemplating, special limited partnership program with dating west and then others that we can, we can work with, that we do other partnerships. That's bringing in some revenue, rep fee for services. Managing D restrictions, for example, we should, we need to be compensated for that work because it's taking time and energy and support. And, you know, so the property management fees, once we have more property to manage. So the last slide is really looking to the future. I am a little bit bold in putting this out there tonight. This is, this is a different version than what's on that. This is evolving and I'm making an iteration of it as we speak. So what's on this, what's on this slide is similar, that's what I'm passing out, but what I'm passing out is a little bit different. So this housing spectrum is sort of like, where can we go if we have, where are we today and where can we go? And so the, the, the green items, the green projects and programming are what we're doing now. The orange ones are what we're working to implement over the next year or two. And then the, the red ones are, hey, we could do so much more. And these are some programs that other mountain communities are doing and we would like to bring to Chaffey County. So of course, the spectrum is kind of obvious, but we want to move from left to right on it. And certainly, one, one group of people that's not on this spectrum is seniors. I think that any new development that is developed should be, include, you know, wider doorways and have access for people to, you know, that'll be something that a senior lives in. So I'll start with programming. So I talked a little bit about our continuum of care. So you'll see that we have that in place, but I'd really like to expand it, we'd really like to explain it to the, to the right. We have the Salida Open Door Project, that's a project that's five RVs. And we manage that project for, that program for them. It's like transitional housing for people that are experiencing housing insecurity. The homeless outreach team is something we're working on for the families. And then the rapid rehousing would be a program related to the homeless that was funded by that grant that we just received for families that are homeless. And then financial literacy, I mean, we'd love to do something with this. I mean, just because you get a house doesn't mean you, or become a tenant, doesn't mean, and you've been homeless, doesn't mean you know how to budget, doesn't mean you know what. And maybe some people have never had a bank account, believe it or not, or what, understand what their credit score is and how to improve that. So I would like to do, we have the rental deposit guarantee program. We're beginning the D restriction management program with Purple Street and the city of Salida's Inclusionary Housing Program that requires developers to build a certain percentage of their project as D restricted affordable housing and whether it's for rent or for sale. And then we look to the right and we want to get to some, a home buyer, we want to get to a place where they can have down payment assistance, where we can educate them on the home buying process and what it means to and all the obligations and responsibilities that come with that. And then further along, if you're a homeowner and you already have a home, wouldn't it be nice if you could build an EDU? And what if we could incentivize people with financial rewards if they sold an EDU and that was D restricted for the community? And what about existing housing, charge programs in other communities where they preserve existing housing? And they, they give the, in exchange for ten percent or fifteen percent of the home value, they, they provide D restricted, D restriction and the housing authority manages that and it becomes part of their inventory for, for housing. And certainly buy downs, I mean, I don't know that we have enough inventory to do buy downs, but it is, it is another solution. And then the last piece of this is certainly development. We already had the special partnerships program in place where we don't have to pay taxes for sales and property. And that's a benefit for them to incentivize them to partner with us. We do the same thing with the Chaffey Housing Trust. We have a partnership with them so they don't have to pay sales and property taxes, that helps them, helps everybody. Some of the programs that are the development strategies that we don't have in place, really, when we've, we've applied to the letter of intent for land banking, but we haven't really begun that program. And we, we need to do more of that, have secure land so that we can nicely develop, just like you all did with Carbonite Street. Adaptive reuse of motels and commercial use space, I mean, that we have some of those opportunities. County, where we could potentially turn a hotel and our motel into, you know, some studio efficiency apartments. Partnership with you all, towns, schools, businesses, the US Forest Service even has a program where I've talked to them, potentially build on their land and do a lease, which is, that's an opportunity that they're doing. I think in Summit County right now, or maybe it's, you go in Summit County. And then of course, the light tech projects. So in conclusion, happy to take any questions. I mean, the theme is partnerships and working together as a community to solve these problems. And really, the immediate strategic plans, exciting with the programming and development initiatives. But then looking to the future, long-term, we really need a strategy of like, how are we going to put a larger dent to this problem and solve it? And so that's kind of what this, this graphic is intended to show. Any questions? Yes?
Sorry to jump right on this one, but I just want to clarify. You said that one of the letters of intent was for the Homestead project is thirty, fifty, and sixty percent AMI for rentals, is that right?
Fifty, fifty rental units, yes.
Fifty, what was the AMI that you were?
Thirty, fifty, sixty, and eighty.
Oh, yeah, for fifty units.
Yeah. I mean, that would be an amazing project to have that come to fruition.
On priority outcome four, where you say that you'd like to secure a ten-year revenue stream of one to two million annually, what kind of a budget would that lead you into? Would it be the baseline or the ideal or best case type budget?
I think, you know, I mean, best case is probably more like five million, but ideal would be one, two million. I think so we'd be talking about that level of commitment at that point.
Can you, can you say what you're thinking about in terms of getting on the ballot again?
Um, I mean, it's still very preliminary in terms of the board has not committed to that. It's definitely something that we're thinking about, but it isn't something that the board has approved or made any firm commitments with. I have talked to a political strategist group that, that about initiatives with the town of Dale in twenty twenty-one successfully and that about initiative for Fraser Valley in twenty twenty-two successfully. And they were off by one percentage point in terms of their polling. And so, you know, if we're going to do this, we would definitely want to do it right this time and make sure that it's going to pass. So we do a survey of the community, a very broad survey that they would conduct, potentially for cruises. But, you know, we need to make sure we're listening and making sure that this is something that the community wants. But I know that housing is something the community wants, it's just a matter of people are willing to pay for it.
Yeah, that's always the big question is who's, who's going to pay for it? But this seems like a hazardous year to me.
No, this would be for twenty twenty-four. We won't do it this year.
Yeah. Okay. Now, other questions, comments? This was helpful, thank you, really good job.
I really like this diverse level of program that you're trying to do. Financial literacy, which I think is huge, like, I mean, I've been, definitely been in a place where I couldn't get the down payment, or not down payment, I mean, security deposit in the apartment. Help people get from that point to potentially even owning a home one day. Just, you didn't know what steps need to make, so.
Yeah.
Really good things.
Counseling.
I have one other question. For you or anybody else here, does anyone have any idea how, how many homeless families or individuals we have here in the north part of the county?
You know, I, I know that that is one thing that we want, that we're going to expand on because we hired somebody for the, under the grant, the Bezos grant that we received July, that will be working specifically on, on homeless for families. And we'd like to expand it to be homeless for individuals as well, but that program is specifically for families. So we recognize that we haven't done as good a job at the north end of the county, but she will be, Tricia will be coming up here at least twice a month to do outreach at the different, you know, I think there's some community services that are provided and she'll be there to meet with individuals that are experiencing homelessness. And I can potentially give you a better number, I mean, I know ninety-four is who we've served. I do recognize that a lot of the friends in the south of the county, that's where a lot of the services are, right? And so we definitely recognize we need to do a better job of being in the north end of the county.
Chief, do you ever get a feel for how many homeless people we, we have here?
Yeah. We have a handful that are here year-round. Couple of them, I think by choice. It seems like we get an influx of transient-type things in the, in the summertime. But colder weather, sometimes people move somewhere warmer. So it, it's not, I haven't seen, like, with our officers, like, it's too burdensome as far as, you know, finding places for them. But I do recall some years where, you know, it's been freezing temperatures and we've had people with nowhere to stay, you know, icicles in their beards and things. And I remember officers, you know, with their own money, buying them gloves and hats and trying to help them. One of the difficulties we've encountered too is some of the motels, it's a challenge sometimes to take some of, some of these people in. Because sometimes they're homeless because there's a mental health issue or a drug problem. And I remember once, this is probably about eight or nine years ago, an officer actually bought a motel room for one of these individuals and they immediately started smoking marijuana, burned the sheets and stuff. And the motel was like, we can never do that again. So it's, it's a challenge. It's like, when we have that issue, what do we do with them to help them, especially when it's so cold out? So definitely an issue to tackle.
Thank you. Anybody else have an idea? I don't personally, no. Okay, well, thank you, Ashley. Appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you.
We are going to talk about the schools and officers in the school. And I think that Dean Morgan, you're going to speak with us about this, is that right?
Yeah, I'm happy to answer questions about it. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the IGA? I'm excited about the direction of this program. I'm happy to speak to the rhyme and reason about why we're changing some things up. We're pretty close with developing this. So I think maybe the best use of time might be to just see what questions you might have about it and how I can help explain things if that's necessary.
And just to kind of level set, just to provide a little bit of history, the, the origin of this was in twenty eighteen when we created a SRO program, School Resource Officer Program. We did have an amendment in twenty twenty-two, I believe, and there he is. And so this is a totally new iteration of this. It's replacing the existing IGA with a different, a slightly different approach to it that primarily Dean and Lisa Yates have been working together on over the last several months. Jeff and I have looked over this and provided input and everything. But as Dean said, it's, it's kind of a step in good direction from our perspective, certainly from the schools as well. But yeah, I want to make sure you all understand it. The school is going to be doing quite a bit of communication out about different terminology, different people involved, things like that and why. So they're, they're focusing on communicating to their constituents as well on this because we know this is important to the community. But yeah, as Dean said, probably take any questions you might have about it.
How does it differ from the SRO program?
Yeah, so the SRO program was a dedicated officer, the School Resource Officer. And that was one officer that was tasked with covering the, the different schools we have in town. Primarily, we partnered with the public school. But we also give consideration to some of the other schools, like Darren Patterson Christian Academy, was also the Montessori School. So we're going to give thought to school safety across the spectrum, to all the schools in town, regardless on whether or not there's a School Resource Officer. Services that, you know, we undertake as a police department, whether or not there's an SRO program. We train the schools on the active shooter response, lockdown protocols, things like that. One of the benefits of, of a dedicated SRO program is they're really designed to help build trust between youth and police. And so we're looking at all these different angles. And one of the things is in Buna Vista, we're a smaller town than the city. one of the things is in Buena Vista, we're a smaller town than the city, than the front range cities where you might be able to have an SRO in every school. Ideally, I think that would be nice if we could have an SRO in every school. But I just don't think that's a reality in small towns. Salida is pretty similar. They have several schools in town, but still one SRO. So I think one of the issues we want to look at is responsiveness is if something really dangerous were to happen at one of the schools, what's the police response going to look like? The other aspect is like I mentioned, building trust with youth. So when we had the last few years dedicated SRO, their office was in the high school. They were on that campus a lot, but we also want to consider Avery Parsons Elementary, the growth preschool. So that officer would often travel back and forth. The school district itself, I don't want to speak too much on their behalf, but I know we've talked that it's important that the school has some partnering with the program by providing some money toward it. And as the years have gone on, they've been able to provide less and less, which I understand. But we still want to provide the same level of service regardless because it's about protecting the the kids and staff there. So I was kind of stressed out over the summer trying to figure out how we were going to fill the SRO position because the two we've had, they were ready to move on and in their law enforcement career to some other things. And we didn't really have anybody that wanted to be a full time School Resource Officer. So I talked with Lisa and she came up with the idea initially of of the school partnership where she recognized there's things going on in town, or sometimes we only have one or two officers on. And that School Resource Officer is sitting there at the school with maybe nothing going on. And it's like, we have, sometimes we've had to pull that resource out of the school and say, hey, we need you out on the street to help with, you know, whatever is happening. So the idea with the school partnership program is we're going to assign a coordinator and years ago, you may remember when there was in California, the the Bank of America robbery at North Hollywood. One of the big things that came out of that was the patrol officers were in this forty four minute gun battle. And it took SWAT a long time to get there before they were able to stop what was happening, forty four minutes. So LAPD, which is a pretty proactive department, they developed what they called SWAT on patrol, where they started teaching SWAT tactics to patrol officers. And I discussed this with Lisa Yates, that kind of came to mind, the idea of what if we started treating each of our officers like an SRO and kind of coming up with a team of officers that are kind of dedicated to SRO duties? So what it looks like now under this program is we have one officer who's going to coordinate it because it does need some coordination. And we did a testing process for that. And Officer Flores was selected. She was an SRO down in Texas before she came here, really good with the the staff and students. The the other thing to consider with school programs. Don't worry about too much.
That was fascinating.
Yeah, one of the things to consider was schools like roughly eight hours a day, but school security goes above and beyond that. You may recall that recently there was a school shooting in Oklahoma at a football game. So the schools told us, they're like, we're pretty concerned about safety of things happening after school at sporting events, at football games. So having a dedicated SRO that's, you know, eight in the morning to three thirty in the afternoon, how do we handle the homecoming dance? How do we handle prom? How do we handle football games? So in the past, we've just kind of, you know, taken a night car or scheduled an extra car and say, hey, can you hang out at the game? You know, and and cover this or hang out at the dance for overtime. So with this program, Officer Flores, she'll be able to coordinate it where the school is going to ask for certain services every month, like up to five. And they'll say, hey, we need an officer at this game, or we need an officer at the homecoming dance. And then throughout the day, officers, while they're patrolling throughout town, they're just going to stop in at the schools, check doors, do walkthroughs, interact with the kids. That's how I started my day. It's actually a pretty good way to start the day. I came on at ten today because this meeting, I figured I'd be here a little late. So I just went over to the school as I walked through the hallways. I mean, that's the best thing to go to the elementary school where all the kids, they think you're Superman, you know? It's fun. And then the the staff loves to see us there. One of the strengths of patrol is that it's random. So nobody knows when a cop's going to walk around the corner. So that provides, I think, a level of security. Frasier Pomford, our K nine officer, he was on today with me, so he did some walkthroughs. So there's officers going in and out of the schools all. And then we're assigned special events like games and things like that. And we keep a log of everything we're doing. And and just the first week, we filled up a log sheet and and one day we had a student that was a runaway or did ended up not getting on the school bus that we helped them with. We had some criminal activity that the school called us and we helped them with. So kind of doing the same things at the SRO, but I think spreading it out a little more so it's better utilization of the officers. And I think that kind of sums it up. Does that explain it? Is that kind of in a better picture?
Those sound, it sounds better. It sounds better for the children and for the officers as well.
Yeah. And one of the things is, um, there's a association called the National Association of School Resource Officers. So the coordinator, Megan, who's been our School Resource Officer, she's been to the NASRO schools, the National Association. And so we're going to send Officer Flores to that. It's a forty week, or forty week, forty hour school. We're also going to send her to Active Shooter Instructor School so she can help do threat assessments and things at the schools. And one of the things NASRO teaches is they call it the triad, where there's three things a School Resource Officer should do. And it's to act as a informal counselor with students, which we've encountered a lot. Where, you know, maybe a female student's having an issue with her boyfriend or something, they've gone to Megan, you know, somebody they feel comfortable talking to. So we're still going to have that dynamic. Also as an educator, so it's not uncommon at all for the staff to ask the SROs to come in and talk about like the Bill of Rights. For some of the kids that are driving, like, hey, if you get stopped by the police, what are some things you should or should not do? They've had baking contests where they have us come in and help judge their food and stuff. Yeah, I got a good picture of Megan. They made a pancake for her shaped like a gun and then the whipped cream was smoked. So that was really a pancake. But, um, and then the the last thing is is as law enforcement. And I know we discussed earlier this year things like the vaping ordinance, which we've already had some issues with that. And there's going to be times where the officer has to enforce the law because, you know, breaking school property. So this should encapsulate all of that. And I feel good about it moving forward.
That's creative.
Thank you.
Any comments on this, sir? You're looking for us to approve the ordinance, is that?
Resolution.
Resolution. What is resolution number sixty five? It's on page eighty of your packet. We'll make a motion to approve resolution number sixty five, series twenty twenty three.
Second.
So we have, we cut to M. Rice. I think I'll roll a call on this. Sorry, my voice is going. Trusty Cobb.
Yes.
Trusty Hilton Hinka.
Yes.
Trusty the Cretzy.
Yes.
Trusty Rice.
Yes.
Trusty Swisher.
Yes.
And Trusty Rowe.
Yes.
Thank you all. Great job, Dean.
Thank you.
The school board will be looking at this at their next meeting on the twenty fifth, which Dean and I'll be attending Brian, Dragon Brian and as well. It's an annual meeting we have with the school board, just talking about programs like this. So they'll be approving it as well.
Yeah, his work. Okay, Philip, you are going to speak with us, I think, about Excel Energy easement. See.
Yes. So on page ninety of your packet is a memo summarizing what's before you tonight, which is a revised proposal from Excel Energy. This, if you may not remember, it's been, it feels like it's been a long time ago, but back early, early this year in January, this was brought forward for the board for discussion. Excel Energy is replacing their large lines that actually start on the town's dry field property and goes north up towards Leadville. And they've been pursuing some some easement, some some space to to conduct that work. We have an existing easement through the property that right now has a seventy five foot wide kind of cuts through north, south of the property. And so and looking at that, they are requesting to expand or blow out that easement consuming about another two acres of property. And so they, that's that's been a part of the discussion that provides them with enough space to access those lines for replacement and ongoing maintenance. In addition to that, they have been talking about temporary construction easement. Again, the lines line work sort of starts on our property. And the way it's been described to us, they they have equipment set up where they they kind of stretch the lines and then they go over the new poles. And so they'll have equipment in place to hold the lines in place. So that that is what is referred to as the temporary construction easement. And then access to that will be necessary on a on a fairly regular basis during the construction phase of this project. So initially, this was presented as a permanent easement that was going from the highway across the dirt, existing dirt road. And then up towards where their where their existing easement is where the lines are. Staff has negotiated out of that away from a permanent easement. They have the right to access that easement. But they have to notify the property owner when they do that. So there's some coordination on getting onto the property or across our property. We felt that was more more appropriate than adding a permanent easement. So they have conceded to that. And so that's referred to as a temporary access easement. That is requested for a two year duration to cover the span of time for the construction project. Let's see here. They are compensating for both for the restated easement, the blowout easement that is along their lines and for the temporary construction and temporary access easements. You can see there plus some additional payment for town's review and execution of these various aspects of the of the proposal. Finally, there is a letter agreement, a side agreement that reiterates the need for restoration of any damages to the ground from this work. They are bound by that already, but that was a priority that was identified by the board back in January and staff agreed with that. So that side agreement would be executed at the same time as the rest of this. And and again, it just explicitly talks about repairing soils and things like that, anything that has been disrupted during the time of construction. With this, there's a, there's a map here just for reference. I probably should point it at this. So it makes a little bit more sense, but and they changed, Adobe changed their setup here. So I don't have the normal buttons, but bear with me here. So this is the dry field property, Highway twenty four, right here, north, south. Here's our our access road, the existing house and ADU are right here. This dirt road turns up and goes to a couple of other properties to the west. So you can see here, the existing lines are the purple and green. The temporary construction easement is right here in the shaded area. And then the temporary construction access or temporary access easement is this this red line essentially that gets them up into this area where their poles will be replaced. So we do have Russell online, I believe, if there are any questions to Excel. But this has been poured over quite a bit over the last several months. I I think there was a pretty good discussion last time, but I'm happy to take any questions you have related to this.
No questions from trustees?
Nope, I have a comment. I would love a tour of Dryfield.
Okay.
Farm at some point, if maybe that's one place I haven't been. I don't know if anybody else has been up there, but related, not related, since we're on the topic.
Next week, Brian starts.
All right.
Start scheduling.
You'll need to see it too, right?
Yeah. Yeah. But yeah, exactly. You're right. No, we'd love to do that. It's a great spot.
Thank you. So we're looking for a motion to approve, approve with amendments or deny the attached revised offer to amend the easement and for temporary construction easement. I still move. We have Cobb and Swisher. All in favor? Does anyone oppose? Motion passes.
Thank you all.
Okay, so the last business item is the is a budget amendment for Carbonette Street condemned deposit. So it's a little triangle of land.
It's a hard, hard one to work, not to draw too much attention to, scare people about that, but yes. So so this one, I wanted to bring forward to the board as a consideration to amend the budget. Essentially, what has, what has occurred is Joseph Tykle led this project with legal. There's a triangle parcel of land that has always been considered as town property. It is included in the desire or the the scope of phase two of Carbonette Street. Before we can move forward with that, we needed to go through a process getting a clear title. That required a condemnation of the property, which was a was an extensive process to make sure that there was no claims besides the town to the property. That has, that stage has concluded. And in your packet, I included the district court affidavit, but but the finding of what the value of that property is. Because the next stage is the town has to put a deposit to the court to hold for a year in case during that time, anyone does come forward with a valid claim of ownership. They essentially, I guess, if they go through a process of proving ownership, they will receive those funds. The other aspect to this is it doesn't seem that there's a guarantee that we will get that deposit back. Some nifty thing that the state can do about holding and keeping those funds. And Jeff is online and can speak to that. But we'll, we will definitely make every attempt to get that money back at the end of one year. This eighteen thousand one hundred twenty five dollars and ten cents would come out of the general fund, fund balance. About half of that could be considered ARPA funding if we don't get it back. And remaining ARPA funds from COVID relief. But yeah, kind of a necessary step for us to take so that we can move forward with base two plan. And Jeff, if there's anything that I missed on.
You stole my thunder. You covered it perfectly, better than I could have. I mean, ultimately, the basic rule is when you acquire property, you need to pay fair market value for it. And when there is nobody who's claiming ownership of the property, you still have to do that. And the real question where there's a bit of a difference of opinion among the various courts in Colorado was whether the the condemning party gets the money back if nobody the, the condemning party gets the money back if nobody shows up in the next year? Or whether it's actually money that belongs to the state and goes into a state fund? And so at the end of the year, we'll try and get it back, but I, I think Philip said that there's no guarantees we can. So we'll do our best for you.
Fee, not a deposit.
Yeah, it's, it's basically the fair market value amount that you would have had to pay had there been somebody who was actually owning the property that you were taking it from.
Why the state gets that?
The house always wins.
Not always, not always.
So basically, you want to get our approval to put that into the two thousand twenty-three budget adjustment that'll take place later.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay. And Paula, do you have a wording for the motion?
I have moved to approve amending the 2023 budget to pay eighteen thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars and ten cents as a deposit to the court upon final ruling of the condemned Triangle Parcel Parcel that is part of the Carbonette Street Phase Two. After one year, the town will attempt to recover the deposit if no other person or entity claims ownership.
I'd say you have the wording.
And I can copy it pretty.
Should we take out the last part? Because we're really approving it as eighteen thousand. Right? I mean, regardless of the second sentence there, which was, we'll try to get it back. Doesn't matter to you?
I don't, doesn't matter to me because we will, we will attempt to get it back.
Okay. Second?
Sorry.
Second from Peter. So we have Swisher and, and Hill, Kinga. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes.
Thank you.
So now we are at the trustee staff interaction. And I would say we should do this and then we'll have a vote to go into an executive session and take a little break before we do that. So Andrew. And they. You.
Well, they have that Apple Fest. Now, Apple Fest is always a good thing. And you had a run this weekend. Yeah. So we're still doing lots of stuff on the weekends. Keeps the police department busy and yeah.
I'm gonna be at that around those. The autumn run?
Oh, the autumn. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you gonna join me, Sean?
So. I want to, I actually have a couple of things. I wanted to go back to the couple of public comments, one from the titles and then the one from Alan Robinson. And just see what folks think. I think Sean had a couple of things he wanted us to try to take up, but I'll let him raise those, that dog park and that water field trip or something like that. And then I also just wanted to thank Philip for, I know you still have time to go to overlap with Brian, but thank you so much for putting us all through this time with Joel and, you know, the rest of the staff and just, I know it's been, you know, we've been very shorthanded and I just appreciate all that you all accomplished and I really appreciate your standing down again.
Well, thank you very much.
Help us for your success the last time you have to do that.
It's been a good run. Been a good summer.
Looks there. But did we want to talk about the, or what we can do about the noise issue? And also whether we want to, whether it's appropriate for us to discuss whether we want to decide whether we want to try to support Alan Robinson's request?
Yeah. Now, we've gotten close before on, on talking about this sound issue. And it's really actually harder than you think to, to declare that something is, is a nuisance sound. And specifically, I think right now, our, our municipal code basically has, requires that a police officer be able to hold a decibel reader and get a constant ten minutes of sound before it's considered a violation. If you think about how sound is or bands are, you know, it's not, you don't really get ten minutes of just solid sound necessarily. You're gonna get, you know, five minutes, a little twenty-second break and then a new song starts up. So it's really, it may be harder than we think to be able to, to, you know, to really regulate that. On the other hand, you gotta do something, you know, there must be some kind of hours that we could, you know, put in there.
Well, I think that's part of the thing is, isn't there not a lot to have music or anything after ten o'clock?
No, so let's, let's clarify that because that's a, that's a misstatement from our code. So Chapter Seven, it describes all about noise and what, what constitutes a nuisance, what's excluded from that, how it's measured. So some good line reading, but there's no ten o'clock curfew. There's no such thing of that in our code. So there are decibel limits in the code that's broken out by kind of zone districts, not specific zone districts, but residential, commercial, things like that. Through, I think there's three categories there. And then there's a difference between seven AM to seven PM and then after seven PM back to seven AM. Those decibel limits go down after seven PM essentially.
Was there anything in their actual business license or liquor license or anything like that?
There's nothing about them that's unique or different or permitted. There's, there's the concept of special permits, things happening on town property, parks being or streets, you know, things like that. And then that gives town administration the ability to, to permit exceptions to the code for certain periods of time, certain conditions, things like that. So there is no, there's nothing special that the terrace has that's for amplified sound or time limits or anything like that. So really, it comes down to how much noise is being created. And then from a property that is complaining it about it as a nuisance, if they call the police and police officers, code enforcement, whatever, can measure it and it, and it violates that code, then it becomes a nuisance they can act on. Otherwise, it, it's a community discussion about what is, what is a nuisance when it comes to noise? And, and are there other conditions that the board's interested in pursuing on top of that? Or, you know, instead of how our code is currently written? We did spend quite a bit of time year or two ago, something like that. Grant organized some codes and some examples from other municipalities. We, we, Joel was part of that too. We had some discussion and quickly realized like there is, there's not a lot of great codes out there. And Jeff would probably share as well that it's, it's a very challenging thing to deal with in terms of code. You know, the town really has a very clear vision of like, we do not want X, Y, and Z. And that we can pursue something clear cut like that. Otherwise, we are kind of left to trying to measure the sound as a nuisance. And you don't want to go too far the other way because then we're gonna be nitpicking a lot of noise that does exist. Dean has a great example of measuring it a few years ago. Somebody was complaining about noise coming from a special or a permanent event. And he was picking up the sound from McPhelme Park, the waterfall was exceeding the code where he was standing. So it, it's a challenge, but certainly recognize and empathize with the concerns that were mentioned tonight. So I think staff is definitely open to discussion, but we didn't pursue any code changes back then because we realized that we might open up unintended consequences. And there really was no clear direction from the board about what they wanted or didn't want on Main Street specifically, because I think that's where most of this originates and concerns and complaints. So.
Jeff, do you have any ideas on, on this?
Yeah, this is one of my, I, I've been doing this full off for twenty years. I mean, a lawyer for thirty years, and I haven't come up with a good solution yet. You know, noise issues are real tricky. I had another jurisdiction dealing with one just a month ago and I don't have a great answer. I mean, you're supposed, this is a note, those decibel limits in your code, they actually mirror state statute nuisance noise, decibel limits. And so, you know, if those limits aren't reasonable for the area, you can change them, you could lower them. Part of the problem, you could change the hours that they apply. And, you know, part of the problem Philip pointed out is that, you know, there are other things that make noise. And then you want to make sure you're not making them too low or else, you know, everything is going to start to violate that code. I don't have a great solution. I just tell you that this is one of those issues that it's difficult. I think really what happens is you have to enforce it against sort of the most extreme obvious cases where there's major problems. And it's pretty easy to prove a violation. The other solution is a community base where you have to work with the different property owners, trying to get them to use reasonable measures, not to disturb their neighbors. You know, you could put in, you know, no outdoor music, non-amplified music at these hours. You could, you know, have all kinds of other restrictions in place that would just prohibit certain types of noise altogether that might have an impact. But you'd have to think about how that would work in different areas. And it could be, you know, zone district to zone district or area to area in the city. So there are ways to try and get a little more precise and address the issue a little, in a little more detailed fashion, but I tell you, it's difficult. So if you try to deal with one issue, then, you know, you gotta make sure you're thinking about the ramifications on another, on other uses. It could be a problem. So I don't have a great answer for you, but I'm certainly happy to sit down and staff and try and think about workable options.
Jake, do you have any, anything to add?
Yeah, I would, I would submit that right off the bat, the, the town's municipal code online is a really good resource to get some public education on this. And if you just go to it and you can just type in the search bar noise. And there's quite a few different noise ordinances related to vehicle noise, construction noise. But specific to this, it's seven dash one sixty-three excessive noise prohibited. I could pass this around if you want, but it's got the little chart as to what the decibel levels are. But it does, and also it talks about the zones. So certain zones like where the terraces, excuse me, is considered a commercial. So there's different levels for commercial. The case Philip was talking about, the, the restaurant had an outdoor live band. And it immediately started generating noise complaints. People came to the board. I think some of you may have been a trustee at that time. And so we, I think the decision at the time was made that that restaurant was given a special event permit to go to ten o'clock. At ten o'clock, their band needed to stop. And that seemed to be okay with the people that lived in the area. That place, if you'll notice, it was in this purple zone and it backed right up to residential neighborhoods, which was kind of an interesting dynamic. But that seemed to kind of resolve it that summer. And then that business since then hasn't had outdoor bands. That's what the council did at that time is they gave a noise permit for like Saturday nights to that business. So maybe that's where the ten o'clock thing's coming from in some people's minds. But like Philip said, it addresses it in the code. And that's what we use as our rule if we're gonna enforce it from seven AM to seven PM and then seven PM to seven AM. Those are the hours that we look at. It does say that it can be music that occurs or noise for ten or more minutes. But it's kind of a little bit weird. And then it says, or, and it gives some other examples. And one of these, it says, or be measured at a point or points along the property line and closing the property on which the noise source is located. And as I interpret that, for example, at the terrace, an officer would stand on the property line major. And if it's over, then it's a violation.
Even if it doesn't go ten minutes?
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah, that would make sense.
So, and that's something we may need to revisit some of this. But on our end, it's not a nuisance unless somebody complains about it, which we have. And then for us, we prioritize, you know, crimes against people, property and nuisance. So if we're busy with other things, we're probably not even gonna be able to respond. And in the summertime, you know, and like Jeff said, if we get real restrictive with this, we're gonna start getting nuisance complaints all over. Another consideration in, in the titles, I thought it was wise to bring this up as a noise study. Because I had a call about five or six years ago from Essex, which is behind City Market. There was a noise complaint from the Lariat because they had a live band. And I was like, how are they hearing that on Essex? So I drove over there and Essex backs right up to City Market. So that big wall was actually reflecting the bass. So as I was driving on the highway, I couldn't hear it. But as I turned onto the street, you could hear loud bass reflecting off the wall from the Lariat. And they were super like, oh, usually have our doors closed. They closed their doors and it wasn't an issue. So I can definitely say in my experience, if they have loud music, but the doors are closed, it doesn't seem to create problems. But this open air stuff, it, it does. And, and the acoustics from big walls or alleyways or whatever, that can create weird dynamics that as police, sorry, sometimes we've got other things to do than to stand around the corners with a meter and try to figure out sources, decibel levels and.
I think maybe even if you did, when your property is this, the street corner, right?
Correct.
And so if the music is up here, it's, sound is traveling like this.
Yes.
You're, you're not gonna read Jack Squat against the building below where the noise is originating from.
And I would be curious too. I mean, I'm not a scientist, but like right across the street is the old State Department building, which is two-story brick. What is the sound reflecting off of that wall doing?
And she also talked just about the spill over after ten, the music, the music may stop. And I realized ten is a, that's not a, sorry, a fine, you know, cutoff. But do you deal with a lot of noise that, I mean, after, as bars close and that kind of thing? And stop?
You know, this one, it was interesting, there was complaints of crowd noise. So we, we've not seen too much of that, but I, I mean, I guess it's a growing pain. The more businesses and activities on, on main streets, you know, downtown districts in Denver, the springs, it's, there's not residential areas backing right up to those as much as we have here.
Tricky, thank you. Seems like a tricky one, right? Because you just said like they're, they're next to a place that, you know, it's good to see vibrancy downtown, right? So these businesses also have to have the ability to make, make money. And, but yes, had a timeframe, maybe obviously too loud, it's too loud. So I'm curious if they, you know, if they had a conversation with the business owner at all or is they just come, okay?
They did, they, they didn't call us, which I respect that. They didn't want to interrupt this wedding. We appreciate that too. However, they, they did reach out to the business owner. There was some communication. So I think they're trying to build some bridges.
That's good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think just, it's important to you to keep in mind, you know, just speaking about the vibrancy in the business and impacting them. It's also the, I mean, when the business first came, this code was in place. You know, we were part of that discussion quite a bit and we used to live probably three houses down from the titles. And it was started with all the intention of, yeah, they're not going to have bands and it's not going to be loud past seven o'clock. And a lot of music or amplified sound past seven o'clock. And so I think it's important just from a planning point of view, you know, and as we're making policies, just to think like, yeah, just because a business came in form and then they want to change their business model after that. And it doesn't necessarily mean that the rest of the community has to change because they want to change their business model during, during the fact, right? And there were people up and down all summer as far as going to their short-term rentals and things. It was extremely loud all night, you know, just from people, drug folk walking around. There's no noise issues. I mean, there were noise issues, but it's not like it's code violation.
That's true, because how would you handle that, right? So let's say they get done at ten or whatever it is. And then, but then it's just citizens, town for whatever, and they're and then, but then it's just citizens down for whatever, and they're had a little bit too much or whatever, and they're just yelling and talking down. Is that still the business's responsibility, or is that then become, hey, those are just citizens, you know, they've left the the business, and now they're just loud on their own. So I assume then it doesn't reflect on the business. It's just people that about breaks.
Yeah, we deal with that a lot, too. And once they leave the private property and they're in public, it can become what's called disorderly conduct. And and just, you know, yelling and stuff often, it's just a officer showing up, say, hey, some people have to go to work in the morning. Okay, sorry. I mean, usually it's that simple. But there's been times that it goes to the level of we we have to file charges. And I mean, that's, we have it in neighborhoods where there's people that in a house, they decide, hey, let's play our bass really loud at three in the morning. So.
So Dean, do you have much trouble with with restaurants and bars over serving people?
Yes, yeah, we have some concerns about that for sure. It it's a difficult thing. The the law isn't necessarily over serving. It's called serving to visibly intoxicated, which the tips class is supposed to give people direction on recognizing that. I'm not sure how diligent all of the liquor establishments are with that. And that prompts some different things from the police department, but sometimes, I mean, I think just as I looked on East Main Street in that two and a half block area, there's about sixteen establishments that are serving alcohol. That's a lot, and for a couple officers to try to regulate that, sometimes it's it's just by doing heavy DUI enforcement. So people see our lights and see our patrols saying, hey, if I get in that car and drive, I'm gonna get caught. But we've had numerous calls for for things, bar fights. We just had a harassment from a a East Main establishment, or the guy was yelling at people on the street. And we had to have a conversation. And one of the things we can do, and you can do, I think, as a board to help with that is every year I get the the form from Paula on the liquor license renewal. So I'll document on there if we've had instances at these bars where we've got concerns of over serving or where we're constantly having noise complaints or bar fights and things like that. And then and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parker, but you guys then and gals as the licensing authority are then able to maybe take some action against that if they're, you know, not following the liquor code or they're constantly problematic.
And do we have to wait for that annual review? I mean, could it happen if there are a series of violations?
Yeah, it could happen anytime. So if we get a liquor violation, we can coordinate either with the Department of Revenue. But in my communication with them, they do prefer that local boards take some ownership of, you know, let's have some consequences for these liquor violations.
Joel, just back to your point, I I'm not sure if you were saying that if they sort of change their business model, is there something that can be done there? I mean, it sounds like we don't have anything that could be done, but are you suggesting we try to address that somehow?
No, it's it's more just just to you know, just thinking about that comment of like, oh, yeah, let's, you know, it helped the business community out and open, kind of open it up, but also it's, you know, people start businesses based on certain assumptions and rules that are in place. And and the community in place. I don't think that town necessarily has a responsibility to go and change those rules because of whatever factors within their own business model may or may not be working, you know.
Then you have someone who's lived in that same spot for thirty-five years that suddenly their lives are impacted. You know, that's kind of crazy.
If someone came in from the get go and said, we're gonna have a rooftop bar with loud music and events, and we're gonna party all night. And that was like the business model they presented as they're starting up, would that have been a different conversation?
If it complies with the code right now, no, it would probably would have been a conversation for sure, but it could have been, well, you got the decimal limits, you have to be aware of that. Why was that noise ordinance?
Like I said, the decimal is fairly faulty in that situation, because unless you get on it, I guess you could stand on the property line and have a twenty foot pole and say, we're measuring at the property line as the horizontal level where the noise is originating, then it would be a
So, but to answer your question again, it, as long as they're complying with the code, there's not much planning or anybody else.
Code doesn't prevent you from being a bad.
Yeah. And staff doesn't, we should not be in the the business of interpreting what makes a good community business versus not in the code clearly.
Their complaint seems valid.
Since we don't really have a mechanism to address it without potentially.
Well, I think something needs to be changed in the code. You had someone that lived in the same spot for thirty-five years. They should not have to change their lifestyle for new businesses that come into town. They have been pillars in our community. They were our kids' teachers for many, many years. How many times have we seen them come in here and complain? I think they have a legitimate complaint. You don't see them going and come turning in calls once a week or several times a year or something. I think they have a legitimate complaint, something in the code needs to be changed, whether it's a time limit where after ten o'clock, there is no more rooftop rooftop music, but taking an establishment where you're on the ground floor, you got your band on the ground floor. It's enclosed in a building. You've got a rooftop projectile to produce the band that's on the terrace. And I do think that that is a lot more, it carries a lot further. And that there that we do need to do something in the code to protect the citizens that live in the downtown area.
I think the code, if you did measure at the property line at the horizontal level where the noise is originating, the code might be effective.
Whether it's just a certain time after ten o'clock, it doesn't happen anymore. But if you were family that had little kids that needed to go to bed for school, and they're listening to that that music coming, yes, it can affect the quality of life, whether we want vibrant businesses or not. It can't come at the health of your citizens.
Can I make a comment? I don't disagree with that, but I just want to, for the argument's sake, the to disrupt, you know, the well being, the health of citizens, we make this argument here, which I agree with. Remember, we have to make that everywhere else. So I'm just saying, anytime something happens that might disrupt somebody that has been there or whatever, which is totally fine, you do have to consider then whatever is developing there. And I'll give you an example of Stackhouse. That was a same thing disrupting all those folks that lived in that area. He wanted to do an urban development, high density, and that would have affected the well being and the lifestyle of the people that were around there. So I'm just saying, totally cool, I totally agree. But just make sure you take that that same thought process, the argument everywhere else. This is the same, you're taking same guideline of your argument.
I I guess I consider one a nuisance and another sort of a development issue that I don't see them in the same category.
But those people might consider a nuisance.
Remember how I voted because it will affect the people that have lived there for years. They thought they were moving out into the country, and it will affect their property values, and it just didn't matter to.
Right, that's why I said it.
So, yes, remember how I voted.
Yeah. I'm there with you. I'm there with you.
I could just add, not to that necessarily, but to the if we are looking at changing any of the ordinance, ordinance or something like maybe not dealing with the decimal part of it, more of the exactly no live music at an outdoor place after ten or no, something like that. So it's clearly identifiable and not having to bring a meter with you to see if it meets decimal or not. It's clear. It's like it's past ten o'clock and I hear music, so. But if it's clearly more clearly defined, if we decide to go down that road route rather than dealing with decimals on property lines and where things are triangulating, it's just clearly that's not in the code, so whatever, but something that could be more clear to identify.
And your code can go by it was only one. I mean, there are a couple, only one citizen that come in and complained, but we don't know how often other people complain about the noise downtown either.
Well, would the board like to direct staff to try to draw draft something up for us to vote on?
I would. I don't know what other people feel about.
Like to explore it, at least to see. I know it's tough, it sounds challenging to try to do that, but would like to us to explore it.
Maybe we could do a work session on it, you know, if we wait till after the first of the year.
I maybe even talking to the business owner, because the citizens who came in, they said it rarely happened. It's happened a few times, but not quite often. So it could be there's a solution that isn't incredibly disruptive to their business model. If it isn't happening all that often, just rarely, and so maybe there is something there for working together on it, but.
And it's something that they would, at least in their email, they said that they would, the business owner says that they would agree to add into their contract with the, you know, with the wedding party, you know, that no, no music after ten or. I'm not sure that's what they said.
They have had another inquiry about rooftop deck or some sort of thing recently, too. So it might be something more global than that particular, yeah.
We need to do it before there's the whole roll up.
Now, rooftop bars are pretty cool. No, but not if they're just driving everybody crazy.
So did I hear you directed staff to work on, let's get a motion, please.
Okay, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion. I don't know what I'm direct the staff to look into possible solutions for louder noise on some establishments, et cetera.
Got that, Paul?
I didn't have a memo.
Paul's words must be getting up right now.
Yeah. Okay, so we have help Nanga and Swisher. And I'd like it if you would read back the motion, please.
Tomorrow else, we're gonna slow down, and you can tell me again how you want it.
Okay, she'll listen to the recording.
Okay. I was gonna say clever Libby, sorry.
Your power.
Or like I said, it's gonna take more time than that. You're gonna have to repeat it. You know, because did anybody else in the room get it word for word? No, you can look at the recording, as far as I'm concerned. Okay.
All in favor of the motion? Does anyone oppose?
Nay.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Do you want to speak more to that?
I don't know. I just feel like it's a very difficult thing to nail down, and I feel like it's gonna take a lot of staff time when we don't really have a clear idea on what we're looking to achieve with this. There's a lot of different noises. You know, I could complain that the garbage truck is too loud at seven in the morning, or people's dogs in my neighborhood. There's a lot of variables with noise and different times of year. I don't know. I have a hard time nailing down or trying to reprimand a business that is on Main Street. If we haven't even talked to them directly, but that's my opinion, so that's fine.
Thanks, Devin. Okay, so this is still trustees. Wrap it up pretty quick. Peter, would you have anything you'd like to add?
No, everything I kind of want to add, I could talk about at the after party later.
And Gina?
Just thank you to the Rex Department and Public Works for everything for this weekend, for the event. Everything went really, really smooth, and it's just really easy to work with our departments in terms of getting that stuff together and anything that's needed. I've talked to Leslie on something. She's super responsive and gets me anything. So it was just successful event, and I attribute that to great town stuff that we have to put it together. So, thank you to them.
Philip and I went to a program on Proposition HH. And why that is a really confusing proposal and, you know, the county commissioners and various people from the different library districts and the school districts and no one's really all that sure how it's gonna affect their their budgets, especially if you look out ten or twenty years. So anyway, just kind of we have a lot to learn on that one, I think. And then also, I went to a webinar on recycling. And there's a a bill that was actually passed in twenty twenty-two, which is designed to have the producers of plastics pay for the cost of recycling. And so the reason I talk about it here is that there's a survey where they they want us to try to figure out our our recycling costs. And and I would think that we should respond to the survey, but it's gonna take some staff time to, you know, to try to put that together. It's not really all that easy of a question. Because you've got, you know, people paying private providers and then the town, well, I guess, I mean, it shouldn't be that hard, I guess. A few phone calls maybe to the companies could tell us how many how many people are hiring them to carry, you know, carry off their recycling. And then the town pays for different recycling costs as well.
I'm up with a number like five million dollars.
Yeah, something like that. It's good. Put that in there. So anyway, it's interesting process. They're just trying to gather some data right now on what are the costs of the recycling statewide. So that's kind of it for me. Joel, do you have anything you'd like to enter here?
Just one, I guess, question for the board, following up. There are a couple developers who are encouraging in various ways of the town, look at the tax increment financing, let us know about it a little bit more. Which is I guess, an opportunity to kind of measure where a tax base is before specific developments, and then after that development, what that difference is to funnel those increase of taxes back to the developer for kind of a payment. So judging like our development has improved the overall economy by X, and therefore we get some some property tax and things that difference. So some developers are encouraging that we look at it, the crossing, I mentioned it in the presentation, and I mentioned it afterward. If if that's something you guys wanted some sort of presentation about. And so I'll just open that up if it's of interest. It may or may not be useful in our in our area and but depending. So I just flip that out, and if there's interest at this point, we can sue it, and if there's not, then it's fine, too.
Sue and I sat in on a presentation on that. Does Loveland has the?
They're working on a short call.
Okay.
Maybe both. I mean, they might both have it.
I guess I'd be interested. I mean, I don't want to, I don't know how much staff time it takes to put all that together, sensitive to that, but I think it might be interesting to just see if it is of use here.
I think that's just me. Meaning like an intro presentation with somebody, probably won't take that much staff time.
Maybe just the intro then. And anybody else?
Yeah, I'd be interested.
I'm curious, just learn more about it, because I'm not too sure exactly what. I'm curious to just learn more about it. Cause I'm not too sure exactly what we're talking about, but I'd be open to try to get the information.
We just don't want to hit you all out of the blue with some random presentation. And kind of find out. It's been encouraged by the department. So we want to make sure the board directs the staff to bring such thing to you.
As long as there's no promises.
We won't talk about that any further.
We'll, we'll look at putting it something on the calendar here at some point, but.
I think when they feel more staffed up. I think when your, when your department has got a better feeling of being staffed up.
Thank you. That was all I.
We're about to enter budget season in the public meetings here. So just kind of reiterate, uh, next meeting, we'll have a work session where we'll kick off. With you all, um, department ads will present a discussion with you all about, you know, overarching themes to the budget. And then, uh, October tenth, I think, um. Will be the introduction to the public and then the board will set the public hearings. Uh, which will be the, the next meeting in October, the two meetings in November and then the, the meeting in December. So, um, all that's coming. Lots to talk about, uh, including property taxes, things like that. So. Stay tuned. We're also organizing advisor boards and other public. Entities or people that have reached out about funding. Now that you brought up. Request probably needs to be settled here, but, um. We're trying to structure that in a way where it comes to you logically instead of sporadically. So that's it.
Devin, Devin, where are you, Devin?
I'm all good. I'm in, uh, northern New Hampshire in the White Mountains at the moment. Yeah, it's eleven thirty here.
Yeah.
Play music?
Playing really loud music, yes.
All right.
Yeah, I'm all set.
Sean?
Um, yeah, I think I got this. Uh, it'll be pretty quick. I'll, uh. I'll, I'll bring in a little bit more information and we'll give it in the packet timely. The opportunity for a letter of support for the dog park contest with, uh, I looked at the contest rules. Think the big thing is hang a dog park. Sign from the sponsor. Second thing, one of that we meet criteria. So there will be like some, you know, uh, do we own the land questions kind of coming our way and. Uh, I think as many letters of support that we can get from staff. So I think we'd start maybe with the mayor and the board trustees. I think once we have that, we can filter down. So, um, do you have anything?
Yeah, just the timing on that, I think is September twenty-first for the letter submission for take as I write all of them. So if the board is comfortable with that, I've looked at the terms and conditions. It's a, it's an award, not a grant. However, there are some conditions. I didn't think anything was out of the ordinary on that. It's fit. It's up to fifty thousand dollars. I think it's low risk to pursue it, but we want to make sure the board is aware of when we do that kind of thing. So if. The board's comfortable with that, we can probably just move forward, submit a letter. Of support from the town and go for it. Otherwise we could not do that. So.
Do you need a motion for that?
Is there a motion for it?
I'll make a motion.
The letter support.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got the Cretzy and Cobb all in favor.
Thank you.
Cleaned up some space, huh? Yeah, and I, you know, I'm looking at our, you know, our workload, you know, I don't know if October is really. That realistic for water plant tour, but you know, I know that we probably put it off. I'd be happy to. You know, postpone it to spring or something like that when we have a little bit more infrastructure in place. But if you guys want to. Try to work it into all the things that we have going on right now in October, I'll make it happen. Uh, but that's for sure. I mean, it's been a while since. People have been out there and I know it's kind of cool. You know, I think, uh, maybe we can schedule a couple of them. If you're interested in doing it in October, I think once. Now kind of once we get past, you know, October, the weather starts to become a little bit more.
I, I guess I, I understand the staff issue and I'd have no problem delaying it, but I'm wondering if our new town administrator, Brian's going to need to. Go out there and if so, is it any more burdensome if some of the rest of us go and haven't seen it? I mean, would you assume he's? It, I mean, don't maybe schedule it around us, but whatever works for him, open up to others. Does that seem reasonable?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, one, one last thing, um. We'll be, um, coming to the board at the next meeting for the, you know, run water supply protection district application. So. Um, you know, I'll have, um, plenty of information. I'll definitely have. Uh, our code, article two and chapter thirteen awareness and that, um. But I, you know, I, I think, uh. There'll probably be a lot, you know, a lot to consume on this. And I know some of us have. Have a little bit more awareness to, to what the project is, um, and where it's at and how long we've been working on it, but, um. That's, uh, something I'd like to, you know. Try to get to you in a way that's, you know. Consumable for everybody and, you know, if, uh, I think what we'll have is, is basically, you know. A pretty good. Location where it's at, you know, the impacts, vulnerabilities, what we're doing to mitigate that. The review, the consultants, the people that have helped us through this, the water vice board, people like Andrew who spent some time looking at this and. Um, you know, really what our, what our code says, things like that. So, uh, hope I can share that with you in a way. If you wanted to. Kind of touch up and brush up on, on that section. It's, it's article two and chapter thirteen, but I'll make sure that I have that in the report. So you can have that before the meeting, uh, comes, once the packet gets, uh, together, um, so. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, chief?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Paula?
I do have something. Changing the town election date. So by working on the twenty twenty-four election budget. The topic of changing municipal elections from April to November and coordinating with the county clerk to conduct the elections came up. With increasing scrutiny of the election processes, security requirements, securing a ballot print vendor, finding people to serve as judges. Previous discussion of rain voting and developing long-term watching procedures, would it be in the best interest to coordinate with the county? Changing the regular municipal election date from April to November and extending the current. Elected officials' terms from April to November would be, have to be approved by the voters. So if this is something that the board would like to consider. You know, let us know because it would have to go to a vote and that would have to occur in April of twenty twenty-four. Currently, right now for the twenty twenty-four election, the budget is set at eight thousand dollars. And that's utilizing the ballot envelopes purchased in two thousand. Staff will print, fold, attach non-labels, stop stamp and seal ballot envelopes. Currently, we have approximately twenty-three hundred active voters. So, so in the past, town staff has always conducted the elections, but going. For, you know, in the future, if the board wants to decide, we can coordinate with the county like what Selita does. And then the county clerk would conduct our lectures.
And how much would that cost?
Well, Lori Rick, um, I reached out to Lori and she said it would cost between eight thousand and eleven thousand dollars, depending on the number of entities coordinating. And if a tabor notice is involved.
And I, I think what Paul has identified for next April's election is a very efficient number, eight thousand. I don't see that being the case. Like she said, that's using existing, uh, envelopes, things like that. So. It would easily exceed twelve thousand, uh, to conduct our own, to continue to conduct our own elections.
And that doesn't factor in the staff time that is going to take. So.
Do, do you all have a recommendation then?
Uh, Paula and I highly recommend the board consider this. It's a, it's a consideration. So it's not a, hey. Let's put this on the ballot right now, but, or I think we're recommending further consideration of this and understanding. Um, yeah, the points that Paul, uh, pointed out a little bit more deeper. Uh, because it, it will have to go to the voters and, and we will need to explain the one, the why. But I think there's some pretty compelling reasons why we would explore that.
The school board is already on that schedule right there in the November. So we're the only ones who are.
Kind of an outlier. So why doesn't November, school districts or November counties know that?
District is on there.
And it is confusing to our voters. A lot of times they. Go to the wrong locations, things like that. So there's some efficiencies, not just dollar wise, but process wise.
So, um, what would you like for us to do? Do you want this to be on an agenda or we need to study it first or?
We could do it as an agenda item and things and then we can work in tandem with Jeff and Catherine as far as, you know, the next steps and things as far as. Putting it on the ballot in. In April. And the good thing is having, this would force us to have an election in April. There'll be four, um, seats up in April. If we only get four candidates, then once again, we would cancel the election by having this ballot question on there that forces us to an election. Plus it also gives town staff the opportunity to learn how to do an election. Cause right now it's Philip and I and Brian has done one in Poncha. That's it. So it would be a good opportunity for staff to learn the process.
Of an election. But do you learn it and then never use it again?
Possibly.
Possibly.
But it would rather have to be the other way around.
But there'll be also facets of it that they're going to need to know anyway, as far as the petition process and the notification processes. Town staff would still have to do all that. It's actually conducting up the election as far as sending out, you know, telling the ballots. Sending them out, receiving them in, tabulating the ballots. And there again, you have to have judges in place to do that. Um, for the last election, we made sure that our cameras were placed where that. Um, during the counting and things that those were there. Our big concern is if we have a watcher. You all have been in town hall. Where are we going to set up the counting of ballots and also have a watcher area?
Yeah, yeah. No, I think it makes a lot of sense to, so combine, combine it.
Yeah, but there again, it's going to have to be something that we have to work on, coordinate and go to the voted people. And also there is the factor that it will extend terms of offices, you know, from April to November.
I didn't hear it. I didn't see anyone squirm.
It was a silent scream.
Yeah.
So do I think we should sue looking at it?
Yes, I think so. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, I left out. Anybody?
No.
Okay. And just take, take us back and not to extend and I sent us down one big rabbit hole, but did we want to talk about the request from Alan Robinson or just? Did you want to weave that into the budget?
No, well, it wasn't clear to me. Was he requesting the funds now in twenty twenty?
He's actually requesting twenty twenty-four funds.
Oh, okay.
So we could wait. Yeah, but he, he needs a letter to that effect that he could turn in in, in October. So he wants a letter saying that we support his idea. You know, replying for the grant and that he'll. And that we, we would do the match. We can intend to do the eighteen hundred, right? I mean.
We've done that before.
We can't come totally committed.
Can't commit it, but we can say that we're prioritizing it on the budget for next year. We, we do that with other entities. So.
Yeah.
If, if we want, we could ask him for a draft letter. We could put that in the next packet and then we could. Incorporate that into the draft budget and then let the board, you know, let the process kind of decide if it stays in the budget or not.
Okay.
That's how.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
So we would direct staff to. Ask Alan Robinson for a. Okay, well. I think we are done with our business items now. Which means that we can decide if we want to go into executive session and then.
Let's see. Mayor?
Yeah.
We're gonna have, uh, attorney, water attorney, Sunita Bell on for the, uh, what's now listed as the second.
Okay.
Session. Okay with it. We could swap those. That way we can get her on and off.
Good idea. Very good idea.
Is that okay?
Yeah. Sorry, Jeff, you're stuck with this all night long. So.
That's all right. That's all right. I expected you to be here.
So I'm going to want a motion from, uh, from a trustee. Um, that trustee will move that the board trustees enter to executive session. And, uh, the topic will be. The topic will be an executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for E concerning the purchase agreement for fifty acre feet of water. From the upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District. Following that session, there will be another executive session to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations. Develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to Colorado revised statute. Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two for E. Concerning the Sangre de Cristo Electric Association Wildfire. Fire mitigation and vegetation management program. So is there, um, a motion to go into executive session?
I still move second.
So we have Cobb and the Cretzy. Um, and then, um, I'd like to do a roll call vote on, uh, going into these executive sessions, please.
Trustee Cobb?
Yes.
Trustee Hilton Hanga?
Yes.
Trustee the Cretzy?
Yes.
Trustee Rice?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher is now in the room. Okay, well, we have a, we have a greater than two thirds vote. To go into executive session. So, uh, let's now take a break. Come back and go.
Take like a five minute break.
Thank you.
For you guys, a sound issue, Selita has a similar problem and they made an order that's.